Good evening, everyone. My name is Robbie Brant and I am from Tech Scott to the City Council members to the mayor. On behalf of Tech Scott, we would like to present Chief Herrera and the Florisville Police Department this award check. And it was for them participating in the collective art exhibit campaign which was held in the end of May through June 2nd. And as you know, as Texans, we are required to wear our safety belts by law. Everyone should be wearing their safety belts. And during that particular week, during the Memorial Weekend, there were numerous citations, there were over 21 citations, and also, which is important, citations were also given for children that were not in their booster seats, in their child seats, not properly seated. And so, we would just like to say thank you for participating, thank you for your hard work, thank you for your efforts. And this $3,000 award will be used for safety, it can be used for training, traffic safety equipment, and so, on behalf of Tech Scott, we would like to say thank you.
Come on in.
Get there, Chad.
Jesse.
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 All right, now look this way, Jesse.
No, you're fine, right there, just look at me.
Yeah, maybe the other way around.
Yeah, look at this way. There you go, guys, one, two, and three. Take one more, I sound like a frog. And that's it. Goodness.
Thank you.
It's October the 4th, the first regular meeting of the month. We do have a forum, we have Councilman Gomez, Councilman Guerrero, Councilman Castillo, and Mayor Protemp Lotus. Council, in your package, we have minutes from September 27th. Let's take a moment to review the minutes. Make any changes if you see that are necessary, then let's entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from the September 27th regular meeting as presented.
Motion by Flores, second, by Guerrero, to approve as presented the minutes from September 27th, all in here, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 4-0. Council, same action for the minutes of September 29th, also in your package.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a correction on item C. To note that the disparaging remarks that were made by Mr. Garcia regarding the membership of the PMZ committee were left out, and I would like to have them included.
Any objections to that amendment?
What was edited, I'm glad you had the last part.
Mr. Garcia, if you recall, he made his resignation and then afterwards, he directed disparaging remarks regarding the members, all of the members of PMZ. And they're not here, and I would like to put those remarks in show in the minutes.
Any objections to the amendment? Is there a second motion then?
I'll second that.
Motion by Castillo, second by Gomez, to approve the minutes of September 29th with the edits presented by Councilman Castillo, all in here, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 3-0-1. New business council has consideration action to approve a pro-life proclamation against violence. There's a march scheduled for Saturday, September 27th, we have a member of the Knights of Columbus with us to discuss that proclamation. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dawson, members of the council, my name is Kevin Travino, I'm Rad Night, of the Knights of Columbus, Council 6641. And I want to thank you all for putting this on the agenda tonight. I did make a change to the date, it says October 27th, but it is November 17th. So what we're having is a third annual pro-life march, where we march from Knights of Columbus Hall to the Sacred Heart Church, where we'll have a pro-life mass, and then we'll have a reception at the parish hall following which is holiday, and refreshments. So, we're here tonight to invite you and everyone here who's attending to come and join us. So as Catholics and Knights of Columbus, have the responsibility to work for the common good of society, we have been called to the pro-life conception to natural death. The pro-life movement needs witnesses to act through personal instruments and daily actions, so, once again, I'd like to thank you all, and thank you all for giving us this time.
And thank you for everything that you do in the community. Also, I believe it was this year that you took home the commitment for 40 cats per vent.
Yes.
I want to thank you for your participation in that, all the families that benefited from the cause. I'm going to ask our Madam Secretary to read the proclamation.
Whereas we live in a society where violence is often portrayed in the entertainment industry as a solution to our problems, and whereas we are frequently faced with people in all walks of life who act out of violence in schools, post offices, fast food restaurants, and other public venues, and whereas there have been a number of recent acts of violence perpetrated against abortion industry personnel, and whereas certain individuals and groups have taken the responsibility for these acts and claim to be part of the pro-life movement, and whereas a small number of allegedly pro-life groups have held those perpetrating violent acts as heroes, and whereas the media has given inordinate publicity to these alleged pro-life fringe groups while ignoring the statements of the established genuine pro-life organizations and leaders condemning the violence, and whereas it is clear from the events of recent weeks that there is an attempt to portray the entire pro-life movement as criminal hateful campaign. We, the undersigned, do hereby issue this proclamation in order to set the record straight. We declare that the deliberate cold-blooded killing of human beings from fertilization to natural death is always wrong. This belief is the essence of what it means to be pro-life, and we declare that the pro-life movement acknowledges that every individual human being is created by God in His image and likeness, and we declare that each individual's purpose is to gain eternal happiness, and the murder of any individual may rob him of the opportunity to obtain this purpose. Thus, we do hereby proclaim that it is the purpose of the pro-life movement to restore full legal protection to all human beings from fertilization to natural death using peaceful and prayerful means to the pursuit of that goal. In official recognition, whereof I here effects my signature on the fourth day of October 2012.
Do you all need any type of assistance during the march on the 17th?
We're going to do it with the Chief of Police on the police escort, I hope this is the police escort. We're going to give that to you then, pass it on to the escort.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ricky. What time?
It starts at 7:30 in the morning. At 7:30 in the morning, it starts at the Knights of Columbus Hall and is open to the whole community. We have people from Pope, Fall City, Corinth City, Pleasanton, Pope Team, all come and join, so it's open to everyone, everyone who supports pro-life. Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do in the community.
Thank you.
Councilor, your motion to approve the proclamation?
I make a motion, pro-life proclamation against violence, pro-life proclamation against November 17th.
Motion by Guerrero, second, by Flores, to approve the pro-life proclamation and march scheduled for March, sorry, November 17th, all in here, say aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 4-0.
Mayor, can we move back to the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, skip over that, I apologize. Okay, your presentation, Employee of the Month for September?
September's Employee of the Month is Adenito Mito Chapa. Mr. Chapa has been serving the citizens of Florisville since May 1995. During that timeframe, he has held titles of Animal Control Officer, Waste Water Treatment Plant Operator, On-Call Group Lead Man, and Water Production Supervisor. Mito was nominated for this award by Public Utilities Director Rudy Vazquez for his work on the last TCEQ Comprehensive Compliance Monitoring Visit. During the thorough process, Mr. Chapa was commended for his record keeping on water production and water well maintenance. He played a lead role in ensuring that the city was in compliance with the state regulations, as well as expediting the process by ensuring that all records were readily available for review. Currently, Mr. Chapa continues to maintain the water production system and strives to improve it whenever possible. He has just completed rehabbing two of the three wells to ensure continued water production for years to come. Mr. Mito Chapa? Could you step up to the podium and take a picture with the council, please, sir?
Just a five-minute speech, that's all.
And then, up here, you can. You all can watch together if you can. One, two, and... Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, if you would bear with me, Mayor, Council, and some of your staff was evaluating recommendations for Employee of the Year. You first had to date the year and on the review. What kind of year did we have? Who contributed the most in a positive way? Who sacrificed the most for the greater good? Although you are not employees of the city, several of you are citizens, came to mind. Our mayor and council members also were thought of during the process. Fortunately, our reward is that we are the leaders of this great community who strive to move our city forward with the help of much-deserved employees. So then, the selection process was moved to the executives who bear the brunt of the workload and decision-making that is required to run a 24/7 operation. First under consideration was Public Utilities Director Rudy Vazquez, who has been serving the citizens of Florisville since May 1989, and has held pretty much every position within the city. Second was Chief Lorenzo De Renna, who rose to his current rank by serving the city since January 1994. Next were Margaret Aranda, start date January 2007, and Carolyn Malazos, start date December 2008. Between both of them, they have served in the capacity of Utility Building Clerk, Constituent liaison, City Secretary, and Parks and Recreation Director. Rudy, Lorenzo, Margaret, and Carolyn are all great executives and worthy of this award. Most of them previously recognized during their tenure. We mentioned them tonight because we do appreciate their service. The selection for this year was based on just that, this year. We've had a great year because the Lord has allowed us one more year to be fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, sons, and daughters. He has allowed us to agree, disagree, and many times, agree to disagree. During that process, one employee has maintained professionalism in the face of criticism and held her ground during some pretty turbulent times. She's worked long hours and held many titles, as someone made note of during one of the public meetings. She's been assigned many projects of which she's completed, presented, and implemented. Sherri Holland has been a driving force in our quest to improve city services to our citizens. Tonight, we recognize Sherri Holland as our employee of the year.[1054.12][1054.12](applause)
Hi, Mama.
Hi, Mama.
All right, here we go, one, two, and... One more.
Hi, Mama.
Thank you, here everybody, and I just want to say that I work with an amazing group of people. Every day is a new challenge and a lot of fun, and I very much appreciate all of the support I get from everybody that I work with.
I have to say that we have a really great staff. Everybody in the Parks Department, the street, the water, the sewer, our administration, our police force, our fire department, we have a really great staff, and I appreciate everybody's effort and all the work that they do, whether it's cold or hot, or the people outside are always working hard to serve the community. As far as the next item on the agenda, consideration action to provide second reading of the caption of the proposed ordinance with a franchise fee for the solid waste contract and setting a retroactive effective date of October 1st. Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, another thing, my order is over, I'm not bothered by that. This is simply the second reading for the ordinance to create the franchise fee related to our solid waste contract and setting a retroactive date of 1 October, which we talked about from the beginning, but since it's not 1 October today, I'm being specific about it. And to approve the caption to that ordinance, it's been noticed in the Wilson County News, and we'll make a copy of that available for the City Secretary's Minutes, and it's a recommendation for approval of that, you should have that in your packages, and if you have that ordinance there, one of you can read it, Mr. Mayor, or if you would like, I'll be glad if you read it here. It's just the caption that's required for reading, the ordinance of the City Council of the city of Florisville, we institute a franchise fee for all industrial facilities and temporary roll-off customers, granting the solid waste collection disposal contract to the authority of the collector franchise fee, from set customers, providing for the remittance of that franchise fee to the city, and providing for effective date, and effective date would be as of 1 October.
Open up for citizens' input on the item 3B. Any comments? Non-council discussion? Staff recommendation is to pass the second reading. There's no questions or discussions, let's have a motion to approve the second reading.
I would like to approve the second reading, the caption of the proposed ordinance for the franchise fee for the solid waste contract and setting a retroactive effective date of October 1, 2012.
Motion by Castillo, second, by Gomez, to approve the second reading, the caption of the proposed ordinance for the franchise fee and a retroactive effective date of October 1. All in here, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 4-0. Thank you, look, item 3C, consideration action to provide second reading of the caption of the proposed ordinance regulating recreational vehicles within the ETJ in the city of Florisville and setting a retroactive effective date of October 1.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this again is the second reading, this is an area where, as we discussed on Saturday, but for different reasons, we do want to regulate within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the way we regulate within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, given by means of plating, not what we did Saturday for special use jurisdiction, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. And basically, this is an ordinance that was advertised on September 19th, and we'll put a copy of that also in the minutes. And the ordinance caption reads, "An ordinance of the city of Florisville, Texas, regulating recreational vehicles within extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Florisville, Texas, providing for the regulating of these recreational vehicle parts through the plating process, providing for induction relief in district court for violation of the ordinance, providing the federal code of laws, providing the repeater clause in establishing effective date, and providing for complication." And again, the effort here would be to make this effective, pass it over from 1 October. It by way of explanation, and we'll segue into the next item in just a minute, we regulate RVs or anything else that goes on in the extraterritorial law model jurisdiction, by means of the plating process and not the special use designation process that we talked about on Saturday, or that I'll discuss in a minute. So purely a plating process that we're setting up here for regulation. As it stands right now, the county regulates this area, and it's for the reason why the city has to regulate it, and we're recommending its approval. This is the second reading.
Before we go into council discussion, I want to ask for any citizens' input on item 3C. Any questions or discussion, council? You have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the second reading of the caption of the proposed ordinance regulating recreational vehicles within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Florisville and setting a retroactive effective date of October 1, 2012.
Motion by Flores, second, by Gomez, to approve the second reading, the caption of the proposed ordinance regulating RVs within the ETJ and setting a retro date of October 1. All in here, say aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 4-0. Item D, please, if you want to table this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, with respect to this item, I want to explain this. In the designation of the notice, I used the term special use permitting, as passed by the City Council on September 29th, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, and absolutely an improper way of expressing what I was trying to express. What we're really trying to do is make the moratorium effective within the ETJ for what we just passed, use the term special use designation, and if you don't have such animals in the ETJ, in the ETJ, it's either flat or not flat. And so, I'd like to pull that thing down, but have you understand why I'm pulling it down, and we'll bring it back. The other thing we'll do when we bring it back is we'll clarify that the moratorium does apply to everything, we noticed it the other day, and enlarged the quantity by the discussion here at the podium, we enlarged it from RV and, excuse me, trailers, I don't know what I'm going, home homes, we enlarged that to any use, and I think we need to make that clear on the record by an additional notice. And for this, I recommend for this item tonight, you can be strictly correct on the notice if you pull it down and table it.
Recommendation by staff to table. Is there any citizens' input on item 3D? If I have a motion to table, please?
Yes, until clarification is made on the special use permits, I would table the moratorium. But that may be the...
It's not the moratorium, it's the use of that term in the ETJ.
The use of moratorium...
And that's my error, because I'm thinking special use, and I moved it out into that mile, and it doesn't fit non-impatrial wise.
Okay, you can table it.
Table it.[1629.12][1629.12](laughter) Please.
Motion by Castillo, second, by Guerrero, to table item 3D. All in here, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries 4-0. Item 3D, consideration action approved, a 2012-2013 operating budget for the Florisville ETC and setting a retroactive date of the beginning of fiscal year being October 1. Colonel, President Manzula, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council. I believe you all have a copy of the budget in front of you all, but I'd like to do, sir, is just continue to read it, and then if you all have questions, please ask me as I go along with the break-up. But I'll start reading from the top. And what I want to do is give you the position of the FEDC and where we stand right now. Our bank balance, as of the end of September 30, 2012, the checking account, $8,775.56. Our money market account, $639,864.78. Our TV, $56,776.42. Total in the bank as of September 30, 2012, $7,5416.77. We have received a $50,000, a sales tax received for September 2012 that adds an additional $50,597.78 for a total of cash in the bank at the end of fiscal year 2012, $756,14.55. What I want to do now is give you a projection of what we believe we're going to earn in fiscal year 2013. And the first item is revenue from the beer warehouse and most of the rentals that we make there, $7,500. Interest account, $550, interest is very low and will probably remain so. Senior apartment loan repayment, put their payment, but it's actually a repayment back from the senior apartments, and that's for the year, $12,715. Projected sale of land, we still have four contracts outstanding we're working on, $450,000. And projected sales tax revenue for the fiscal year, $667,000. And what we project at the end, for the total of fiscal year 2013 projected income... And what we project at the end, for the total of fiscal year twenty thirteen, projected income, one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's the total amount that we believe we're going to have to carry out all the projects and missions that we got. Total funds, fiscal year twenty thirteen expenditures, and what we do to maintain the beer warehouse, if you get operational, three thousand, five hundred dollars. Downtown renovation, fifty thousand dollars. A loan of business park, ten thousand dollars. Veterans park, six thousand dollars. And at the Rancho Ganesha business park, and that's for all the road improvements and drainage studies and work that we have to do out there, satisfy all the requirements, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. US one eighty-one infrastructure, and that's extension of sewer lines and water lines as needed, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then in personnel, sir, and these personnel admin, marketing, promotion, debt service, if you look on the second page, you kind of get the breakdown, but I'll go through the general items. On personnel, ninety thousand, two hundred and fifty-two, that shows a five percent increase from the last budget that we presented. And that brings us salary as executive director of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and two dollars. I'm also hired a projects coordinator to assist with all these construction projects that we have, and I expect to spend sixteen thousand dollars there. Payroll taxes, seven thousand, brings a total of personnel, ninety thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Admin, gives you a breakdown, total admin, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred. Marketing and promotion, and I'll go with those items. We're spending on our website update, and that's primary FEDC website, two thousand, five hundred. We also maintain and have the shop employee website, another three thousand, five hundred. Promotion materials and science is needed to promote the projects that we have and other things that we're working on, ten thousand dollars, total marketing promotion, fifteen dollars. On the debt service, the primary most part of the loan that we have, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Interlocal agreement funds that we have with the city, one hundred and fourteen thousand, nineteen dollars. Total debt service, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, nineteen dollars. The total admin is three hundred and five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. That brings me down then to the civic center, and funds that are due to the city, given by the FEDC made for our infrastructure projects, and this was going back to fiscal year eleven. I coordinated with City Manager, Andy Johnson. Needing additional time, not because we didn't have the money, but because we had other projects to do. The board and I felt we needed to have the money to reserve to cover all the expenditures. But the total there to the city is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and we expect to pay that in full this fiscal year. Sports facility enhancement and expansion, and as you recall, last year at this time, FEDC board agreed to set aside a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to assist in the enhancement and improvement of the sports facilities within the city for the benefit of the children of the city and the community. We're allocating a hundred and twenty-five thousand to that. As all of you know, we are currently being sued by the county, and they filed a suit against us alleging some indiscretions or irregularities in some of the means of the pack. We're filing our documents against them, and that's pursuant. But because of that, we can't move forward on the borrowing or whatever in terms of sports facility. What the board wanted me to do is include that in the budget, and ask me to continue planning, to continue working on the plan that we see that's needed at the at the City River Park, and in additional fields that we may need to provide for all the communities and children. And as all of you know, facilities at the River Park, the baseball fields, the bathroom facilities, the concession stand are in horrible condition. In fact, one member of the audience a few months, a few meetings ago, said that he believed they should be condemned. We don't think they need to be condemned, but we do believe they need to be renovated completely. And that may mean taking down some structures out there. But we intend to continue planning that and see how we can move forward in that. As part of that also, I believe we need to fix the riverbank stabilization issues and problems that we have. And all of you have seen the pictures, and I believe some of the members of the audience have seen them as well. What the river is doing every time we have a big flood is encroaching more and more into the park. And unless we stabilize the riverbank, we're going to lose a great part of what is now the Florisville River Park. So our plan is to continue working on that, and in that regard, I've started the negotiations and discussions again with the San Antonio River Authority and their engineers. They came out here about three weeks ago, they did another review of the plan they had done for us back in twenty-ten, and I'm waiting for them to tell us, you know, what's the best way to approach that in the most economical fashion to do the thing that's needed and still save money. As part of that plan in twenty-ten, they also gave us a plan as to how to move forward on drainage problems that we get from where the civic center sits, it drains down towards the River Park and under the baseball field. And some of you that have been out there, I know, Councilman Gomez, who's been out there considerably with the kids playing ball, et cetera, there are some extensive sinkholes out there that we need to correct. The only way to correct that is to do the drainage work and divert the water away from the fields, back towards the north of the field, and then create a barrier and a water retention system that takes the water that's coming off of the civic center and from the east of the field down towards the river away from the water. The board has given me the authority to continue planning that and continue working on that. We don't know the outcome of the lawsuits, but once that, you know, is resolved, then you can see how we can keep forward with the plans to expand the field and build possibly two or three more ballfields, turn on quality-sized fields for the kids. We believe there's a demand for that, and I believe our kids are playing well enough that in many cases, they do need fields that they can hold tournaments on, host other teams from other cities. And unless we do something now, I think, you know, four to five years from now, we're going to be in dire straits. Our population is growing, the kids are involved in sports, and that's something we want to continue. I believe we need to do this to make sure that we have facilities for the children. The total expenditures for the year is one billion, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. And what we predict and project cash reserve at the end of fiscal year thirteen, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, six hundred and eight and fifty-five cents. And that's what I believe we'll have in the bank at the end of next year.
Yes, Jesse, you said you had not paid the one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars yet for the civic center?
Yes.
Okay, today I had a discussion with Andy, did he tell me it was paid? So who's telling the truth here?
We both are, yeah. And what I said was, you could get this paid in fiscal year thirteen. We are now on the fourth day of fiscal year thirteen. Mr. Johnson has been talking with me and asking, you know, see, you know, what would be possible for us to transfer the funds to satisfy the condition that we make of them, and considering the amount of money that we shall have in the bank, and the nature of the project, so we have to move forward on, we believe that we can make the payment due, and I did yesterday, and provide the funds. So the correct answer, and the right answer, is that we're making the payment in fiscal year twenty thirteen, and as of the third day of the fiscal year, we made that payment.
Okay, my second question is, on this sports facility enhancement expansion, the one hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
You have it under expenditure, shouldn't it be under debt service since it's going to be around?
No, because for right now, you know, all that the board wants me to do is show that we validated the funds. And what they've asked me is just to continue planning and trying to come up with a work of the plan, whichever way, you know, the FEDC board and City Council decide to move later on. I think we need to make sure that you have a plan that we can act on. And for us, to be getting part of the plan is that river study was done by the Sarah engineers, and that allows us to start planning how we're going to fix the riverbank and fix the drainage problem. Some of the things that I believe we can do within this amount of money that we've set aside, by using local contractors, looking to local wealth, looking to registered Sarah engineers, we can start working on some of these projects, keep the river from further destabilizing, and then start to see what we can do on the drainage plan. In terms of the concession stand and some of the facilities there currently existing in the park, I think we can start working on those, and we don't have to expend great sums of money. We do it right, it's managed right, look at it, we can rebuild the bathrooms, rebuild the concession stand, and perhaps reconfigure how all the vault teams out there have equipment stacked up in four old buildings and trailers, et cetera, out there. Don't do much to enhance the appearance of the park, but I know it's needed because they've got their equipment and things in there. So this just applies, sir, for us to have the capability to move on some of these things if, for whatever reason, we can't move forward on the long, or the completion of the sports facility or whatever. But if nothing else, I believe this is a good alternative, to continue working on the fields, and it'll continue allowing us to improve the fields, and also do some work on Cantarana Park, and also on Press, North Press Park, which we have pole bikers. And that would be an ideal site for about eight to ten soccer fields. These pole bikers of land is clear, it's level, we've done all the work out there and cleared out. Now all we need to do is have a road to reestablish a wider way from Sullen Springs into that site. And then we would have a location that could be totally dedicated for the young kids, and also the wildcatters, and also an area for the little people players, because right now, they don't have a dedicated field. And little kids and their parents and coaches are always having a scramble to find an area where to play. But if you have this field that's dedicated to youth football, which includes soccer, the wildcat football, and then adding the little people players, if you have a quality field that's off the highway, we'll have active parking, and I think it's a safer area. You already have water and sewer on the side, because there is a water running and sewer easement in that area that Mr. McKenzie donated to us as pole bikers at North Press Park.
Colonel, one question regarding the sports facilities. One of the questions that was asked me Saturday is why are we discussing this now? What I've been trying to tell members of the audience, and that actually we've been discussing this, correct me if I'm wrong, about six years.
And probably longer than that, Mayor, but I know when you became Mayor, and we've been serving with the FEDC prior to that, and those are discussions that we've had, you and I personally, doing the field, along with the City Manager, here in public. A brief yawn, and also in doing the work, I sit on the San Antonio River Parks Planning Commission. In fact, I'm the chairman of that group right now, and I have been in for about eight years now. And one of the missions that we have is to look at all the recreational opportunities that we have in conjunction with the river. It's a San Antonio River Authority group. We meet regularly with the folks from Goliad, Conce County, Wilson, and Bear County, and the River Authority personnel. But since two thousand and three, we've been working on a program to improve all the parks. In fact, we're starting another round of meetings this year, but if you look at the plans that are having offices, they date back to two thousand and three, two thousand and four. And also the same thing in dealing with the National Park Service, we've been working with them to improve the facilities at Rancho La Scapa and make that into a tourist area where everybody can enjoy what's out there, but also how to connect the river and Rancho La Scapa. That's been in place now for over ten, fifteen years. Now, all these programs take time to implement. The discussion right now is that, you know, now's the good time as any to start applying resources to the needs that we have. In the past, we've not done that in this amount of years, and we've been working at it. When we started working the Hyatt and Bytril, if you look at different parks that we're working on, the State Park, Cantarana Park, McKenzie Park, I call it McKenzie Park, North Press Park, we have been looking at these things for some time now, in different ways and in different discussions. But I know that we've been involved at least eight, ten years actively discussing parks. Other things have come up, we've not been able to commit funds to this endeavor. But I think now, the FEDC will be in a better position to put some more money into these projects, and I think it will be for the benefit, for the greater benefit of the community.
Another question that came up during the meeting on Saturday is that if somebody logs on to the FEDC or the comptroller's financial statement for the FEDC, it shows a deficit.
Sorry?
That there is a deficit that shows, and I don't understand why it is, could you explain to the audience why it would show that?
Right, what that is, is in the current accounts, it shows the monies that we receive this fiscal year. What, in QuickBooks, and that's what that is, in the QuickBooks program that we have, the monies that we have in the bank, the monies that are in reserve are not shown in the current account. But if you look at the balance sheet, it is produced by QuickBooks. It gives you the monies in reserve, just what I've showed you today, what monies we have in the bank, that for us, we use those all the time as part of our operational monies to use and to continue the projects. Our projects just don't end at the end of fiscal year, they continue sometimes, we've been working for multiple years. But if you look at our balance sheet, it shows that our funds are in balance, our accounts are in balance. The latest audit that the city did, which included the FEDC, and Waxman and her team, you know, totally shows that we're not in the red, and you can see by the numbers that I'm giving you through the bank and ask what our account balances are, and about the money in the bank.
Before we take the action, Colonel, I want to ask if there's any citizens input?
I have a question.
Go forward.
Your mic's not working, I can talk loud enough. Is it my understanding that there were soccer fields that were moved already to the back of the event center recently, or are they going to be?
They're utilizing them right now as practice fields.
Practice fields.
Anything else?
And at any cost?
What's that?
At any cost?
No, no cost.
No cost, like, what was your question, no cost?
To move them over to the back, to set them up for practice? From where they're at right now?
Now, they didn't move, they're still utilizing that, the overflow goes over there whenever they have too many people or new practice space.
To the back of the event center, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
We've been talking about this recreation sports place, like, you know, we have a lot of parks out here that they need to be cleaned up. We have a lot of citizens here, there's some tables broken, there's some, that P country, and why aren't, somebody do something like that?
Sir, this is regarding the FEDC budget.
I just said it, but you were talking about that, you know, you were trying to put the public in the situation that we're asking you, why are you doing this now?
No, sir, the item on discussion is the FEDC budget.
Yes, but what you said is, you know, you're asking why are we doing the sports place now? And the question that I have to give, we're so concerned about the sports place, but we got some parks that do not need to catch up for the people, and that's what I'm saying. You know, I understand, but you know, a lot of people don't want the park because they don't have a place to sit, or they don't have a place for the kids to play in, so what are we doing about that? I mean, it's part of the FEDC, right?
No.
It's part of the city?
Right, but we're talking about the FEDC budget.
So who's cleaning up the city parks?
For now, let's talk about the FEDC budget.
Let me ask America, Jesse. Jesse, you know, since I've been here, you've given this as your presentation, but this last year, the public have asked us to be more transparent. My question to you is, like, when you list the downtown renovation, like, for fifty thousand dollars, and the rental ground, you put three hundred and fifty thousand, is it possible when you say three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that you can break that down?
Yes.
So the public can know where it's going? Because it's like me getting Morgan Bill fixed and they give me a dollar amount, I want to know what they did.
And what is it that we're looking to do in the downtown renovation?
Exactly.
And as you know, we've discussed the drainage issues over the street.
Right.
We still have some onings that we have to do, sidewalks.
Break that down.
And we can do that, I can do that.
Another question, you said you had hired, I guess we sent him, or the projects coordinator. Is he getting paid by the hour, or is he locked down, or how does he get paid?
Basically, you know, by the hour and sometimes by the nature of the project that we have. And what I'm asking him, he's serving as an estimator of the different projects. Four days with the work, with the contract that he was hired. He orders the parts and supplies, he does the inspection, all the work.
How do you base his pay?
Based on about fifteen, sixteen dollars a dollar.
So it's not set?
You know, that's the amount that I've been using.
All right, now, going back to your five percent increase, did you ask for that five percent increase? Or is that, sorry? Did you ask for your five percent increase?
No, sir. The board met and they had during our budget workshop and the discussion that they had and the evaluation that they performed on it, they come up with that number. I did not sit in on the discussions, I promote, you know, the five percent. That's what they did, and that's what they came up with.
You may, or you may not deserve the five percent, but from my personal, you know, feeling is that the timing is off because of, one, the litigation. Are you still going through mediation with the park, what's it called? The Rancho Grande Park?
Mediation, what, what, sir?
Regarding, one, to, and especially with the county, as far as?
Verbal mediation, you know, we're discussing with them, and there are things that we have to do. We have asked for the engineer's studies that they're required to, and that, you know, as soon as we get all that worked in, then we will, we get preliminary reports and everything, and then we will present them the final reports of what.